Good evening. Welcome to the January 29, 2018 City Council Special. It's not a special meeting, it's just a regular meeting, right? Just a regular meeting. I'm going to call the meeting to order and we're going to go straight to general orders and that's to Mr. McNichol.
Thank you. We have two presentations for council tonight. One is on civic engagement and we'll start that off with Sherri Fletcher, our Director of Marketing for the City of Stillwater.
Sherri Fletcher, Director of Marketing and Public Relations. Oh, I jumped ahead, hang on. So I've been asked to provide kind of a brief overview of what civic engagement is and then I'm going to go through that civic engagement spectrum that you have on your desk. And these are drafts in that we can make changes depending on your conversation later. I want to do this kind of FAQ style, just to get us started. So what do we mean when we say civic engagement or public engagement or outreach? These are terms we use when we want to encourage participation and understanding of government through outreach, inclusiveness initiatives that inspire trust and confidence in local government. So when do we actually engage the government? Well, there's everyday municipal topics that would benefit from early or expanded civic outreach. So this would include, you know, like major decisions, policy decisions, city planning initiatives, transportation initiatives, the budget process, you know, anything that, any issues that have significant public interest. However, it can also be something small like a program or maybe even a change to a program. So who's responsible for civic engagement? Well, that would be city leadership, council, city manager's office, the department heads, everybody behind me. We all have a joint responsibility to identify which city actions need civic engagement, what's the appropriate level of civic engagement, and then to design and implement a civic engagement process. However, all city employees are really expected to engage in open government and to strengthen civic engagement. So tonight, in your, the second part of the evening in the strategic plan, we've listed civic engagement as priority number six. So I'm just going to kind of quickly go through the objectives for civic engagement. One is that we would like to create an environment where people can find or share the right information at the right time. We want to continue to provide the public with balanced and objective news, information to assist them in understanding problems, issues, opportunities, or solutions. And we'd like to connect the public with opportunities to be involved in the feedback process and at the appropriate level. So, let me open up something else. So here is the spectrum, the civic engagement spectrum, and you've got a copy in front of you. This was created by the International Association for Public Participation. And if you Google this, you would find like dozens of versions of this. They've been, working on it probably for 20 years and there's a lot of different versions, but they've kind of settled on this one. You'll also see that a lot of municipalities also use this spectrum or they adapt it a little bit for their organization. So the first column where the inform is, and you get increase in levels of civic engagement as you work to empower. So inform, this is a one-way communication where the city just pushes information out to the public. So the goal is simply to make sure that the information reaches the public and that they understand it when they receive it. This would be your news, social media posts, the government access channel, those types of things. The second column is called consult and this also, this is a two-way communication and the goal is to gain kind of a broad range of feedbacks. And so it would take the form of focus groups, your office hours, polls, surveys, public meetings. Involved is the next row and that one is really more for, it's also two-way conversation, but it's usually focused on like an issue or something and the conversation, the two-way communication evolves into more of a dialogue or a conversation because it usually takes a little bit longer to take care of those. Collaborate is where citizens fill these councils and boards and tasks and they're usually to identify problems, provide solutions, and so it's more of a volunteer, you get onto these boards. And then the final column is empower and that is obviously when you go to vote. And so there's some examples there of how that, of all the things that you can vote on. So the next, when you scroll down a little bit, so there's a row here that talks about, you know, whenever we engage in any of these levels, that we also promise the public something. So like in under inform, we're going to promise you that we're going to keep you involved. In the feedback areas, it's like we're going to keep you informed, but we're also going to gather feedback and we're going to let you know how we use these, the feedback. And then it goes all the way to vote and that, of course, is that we will implement whatever it is that you vote on. The bottom of the very long sheet of paper here shows examples of how the city does each of these levels. And I've included kind of recent examples. I've tried to include some statistics and just give a wide variety of all the things that we do for civic engagement. So I would be happy to answer any questions about this document or I can keep going.
Say that again.
Do you want me, do you have any questions? Okay. All right. Hang on, let me go back to my PowerPoint. Sorry about that. I've also, this is a little hard to read on the screen, so I've given you copies of this. So how's the city doing? So we recently did a, an activity where we consulted and we did a citizen satisfaction survey and I've pulled a couple of questions with the results here. The blue and the teal color is good. The pink is areas that we could probably do some improvement, but overall, these numbers are really good. I'll just go through a couple of them. The city provides access to information about issues, projects, services, events, and meetings. So you can see, we're kind of like, oh, what's it, about 80-something percent that people strongly agree or they agree that we do this well. The city is responsive to my needs and concerns. Again, we're kind of in the 70, almost 80 percent there. Let's see, I've got to quit touching that. Hang on, number three. Okay. The city gathers feedback from residents on new projects and from policies and projects. We're at about, right at 70 percent strongly agree or agree with that. The bottom one is, I understand how my tax dollars are used by the city. And that one, we're really at about 54 percent agree on that. So that one's a little bit low, so that kind of gives us some insight that we probably need to do some more civic engagement on this particular topic. The, another question from the citizen satisfaction survey, the blue is good, white's neutral and the red is areas that we could probably do some improvement. And those would be information, is information available about city programs and services? You can see we've, we're doing really quite well on that, only about 15 percent feel that they're dissatisfied. The overall usefulness of the website, about 12 percent, but that's dissatisfied. Everyone else thinks we're doing a good job or have no opinion. What's the, let's see. The bottom one, opportunities to engage and provide input into city decisions. We're looking at about 70, about 75 percent think that we're doing pretty good on that. So what can we do better? In 2016, the city adopted the use of plain language and, which is detailed in the Federal Plain Language Act. And so what we've been doing is really looking at our, the information that we put out for the public. We want to make sure that, the goal is to create, write the copy on the webpages or forms and documents and we want the public to be able to read it and understand it the first time they pick it up. So we've been doing a lot of rewriting and redesigning and, you know, really kind of looking at the material that we're putting out there. The other thing we're doing is creating a guide or a checklist, if you will, for citizen engagement that the staff can use and it would be kind of a companion piece to the spectrum that you have in front of you so that when you do have a new project or something, you know, it's like you're into the project and it's like, oh, you know what we should have done. We'll kind of have a checklist to help people make sure that they're thinking about all of the things that they need to when it comes to civic engagement. That is my presentation. I would be happy to answer any questions or anything else.
Counselors? I really appreciate this work and I love the graphics and all the shaded colors and everything. It's just a nice, nice presentation, Sherri.
Great.
And it's really kind of goes with the whole, our last meeting, talking about employee, great customer service and, so it's all congruent. I'm wondering, you know, if, and this kind of goes into the next section on the strategic plan. You know, if we said, we're looking at these numbers and I see 45 percent of people understand how their tax dollars are used by the city. And if we, if, as a council, we said our staff, by 2019, we'd like to have 60 percent people understand. How would you do that? And I'm not, I'm not asking you how you would do that, but I would like to see some measurable, some ways to measure progress.
Well, I think with the citizen satisfaction survey, the thought is, is that you would do it every three to five years.
Sure, you couldn't afford to do it every year.
So for this particular question, I think, you know, it kind of, you know, we looked at it and said, well, that number probably could be higher. So the city manager had directed us to look at our outreach. We pulled together a communication plan just on the budget and gave that to him a few weeks ago. So we are, we went back and looked at, like, we have a budget information center on the website. Just, you know, an example of something that we immediately changed is that we had the tax, the sales tax kind of broke up and it was just in a chart. We thought, you know, we could probably do better, so we put it in a pie chart, made the numbers bigger so that it was easier to read. So we, we do have some, well, today we had Money Monday where we had the CFO do a live Facebook page where she went through and explained, she answered questions that we gathered from Facebook and that was kind of a new thing for us, which was direct response to this. And we should be able to, you know, start answering those questions, so we're going to do that once a month. We'll do Facebook Live. We have sent out some emails to civic organizations asking them if they would like the CFO or the city manager to come and speak on the budget. And we're going to, we've got a couple of other things that, some online, some tools that we're thinking of implementing. But yes, to answer your question, this, you know, using the citizen satisfaction number as a way to measure, that gives us some time to really look at the tools that we're using and we should be able to see that number move just from outreach, yes.
It's, it's just really nice to be able to say, we started here and I have every expectation and the optimism to think that the list of all the things you're doing, it will go, it will be higher.
Oh, thank you, yes.
Anybody else?
I don't really have any questions. I think, just to echo the, this does look great. I appreciate, I did notice the Facebook Live today and appreciate that we're using it to find targeted strategies to address specific things. So it, to me, seems to be right in line with what we should be doing.
What I like about it, and what Pat, what I heard you say also is anytime, and Sherri, I know you know this, anytime you can measure something to see your progress and what I like about seeing charts like this and figures like this is that we can measure from them lightly to see if we achieved our goals. And I'm hoping that when you do programs or certain educational things that you might test and go ahead and do another survey to that group of people just to see how, because we know it's going to rise. Yeah, it's going to fit and it's going to.
Right. Those are things that we are looking at and we just, you know, of course, measuring is always the most important thing.
And it's always the hardest.
Yes, it is.
Yes, yes. And the evaluation, but I agree with everybody. It looks great and it has, I think it has the right feel to it. And I know you've worked really hard on this and the city has worked really hard on this. Since I've been here for five years, we have come a really long way in the civic engagement. I'm really proud of that. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, you get to listen to me.
Yes.
And if you're at home, one of the advantages of coming to a council meeting is you actually get the printed material. And I think if, after tonight, perhaps Sherri, we can get a draft of this up on the site with any changes that the council makes. And if you'll bear with me for a moment, we are going to talk about the strategic plan for 2017 to 2021. And it is designed to be a living, breathing document and I want to tell you a little bit about it and then just have a discussion with you about the plan and any changes that you would like to see. And if I don't read this, I won't get it all, so I'm, bear with me. The strategic plan was developed from listening to council and reorganizing previous visiting, visioning sessions. It was the work of a team. So we listened to what you had to say, we discussed it and tried to catch many of the things in previous strategic planning sessions that the council has in this document. The document is meant to be a public document that is easy to read and understand. The document is tied to the budget process. It's the big picture that keeps us on track. It helps us determine, should we budget for this particular item if we're talking about some specific issue. Document also helps staff understand how the tasks they are assigned fit under the priorities. It's a four-year plan that can be updated each year. Strategies may be the only section that may need it or there may be a whole new list of items that the council might like to see. And it's not meant to be an exhausting, exhaustive list of, it is kind of exhausting sometimes, but especially when you're talking about the budget, but it's not meant to be an exhaustive list of priorities, objectives, and strategies. The document does not include the tactics each department uses to achieve the strategies and objectives. The priorities and objectives are set by council. You are the policymakers. Strategies based on those objectives set by the council are set by the city manager's office. And we are using verbs, create, excuse me, continue and connect for the objectives to provide additional direction. So if you want something created, something new, you're going to have to tell us, or you're going to, you're going to have to tell us, create this, and then we're going to have to come to you and say, here's how we're going to fund it. Or maybe we say to you, we can't find a way to fund it. And you get the idea. So we didn't really come here tonight to talk about numbers because we wanted to get the council priorities first. But to give you some preliminary information, the revenue for the city, for the general fund budget should be about the same for the coming year as it has been this year. There should be some difference in, and some increase in the use tax revenue. Otherwise, we believe sales tax is going to continue to remain relatively flat, even given the happy news of November collections of this year. It remains to see if that was an aberration or if that will continue. Obviously, if it continues, we'll adjust those revenue projections upward. But the idea tonight was to get direction from the council. How are we doing? Are we going in the direction you want us to go? Are the priorities that were set last year the same now? And are there items that, again, clearly this was a draft, are there, is there other priorities that you would like to see added to this? So if you have questions, I'll try to answer them.
Counselors? Norman, we had a little, a brief time to be able to talk about this earlier.
We did.
And I think in your narrative there, you said it just slightly different in the very first part of the budget process. And I would back up a little bit. When we spoke also, I mentioned how nicely organized this was and how nicely put together. I loved the little organizational chart in the beginning. That's very helpful. And thinking about, on the first, on page seven, the city's strategic plan is closely tied to the city's budget process. I really like the budget process is closely tied to the strategic plan, implying that the strategic plan comes first, even though I know how important, how much money you have is.
Okay.
Am I, I may be misreading that.
Where are you looking?
Say, what you, page seven, the first sentence.
Okay. So, and you are absolutely correct. I mean, I would not argue that with you at all. We have not made any secret that revenue picture for the city isn't great and we have seen it grease over the last three, three and a half years. And so it does, to a certain extent, drive the strategic plan instead of the strategic plan driving it, but.
Well, it drives the implementation of the strategic plan, but the strategic plan should be the bigger idea.
And I agree, yes.
And it just seemed.
So would you like to change that first sentence to read the city's?
I'm really not an English.
Budget process.
We can change those words really easy.
All right, all right.
Taking notes? Okay, thanks.
What else?
So I'll just make a formatting comment early. I really like the way these are set up, the strategic priority, the objectives and the strategies kind of tied together on a page. I would like, like right at the beginning, the strategic priorities listed, like on one page, so I can see all six of them at one page and then maybe even the objective, sub-objectives on each page, so I don't have to flip through all of it to kind of look at the big picture of the strategic plan. Is it in, well, on the table of contents? That's good. Yeah, I didn't think about that. I didn't flip back there. There you go.
It's at the front.
But maybe even with the, just a quick listing of the objectives for each, just so I can, so when somebody looks at it, they can kind of see the big picture without, without all the detail from the beginning. And in terms of the strategic priorities, this is all stuff we've talked about and set for the most part, right? I mean, it's changed a whole lot from, I think the, you know, I didn't find any strategies in here that I disagreed with. I probably could list five or six more that you could probably put on each one of them and I'm sure you all did too as you were going through this. I don't have a lot of additions or subtractions to make on any of these and I don't, I don't know that there's a lot to quibble about in terms of how it, how it looks in this document. If the rest of you have other specific suggestions.
I like your suggestion about, excuse me.
Please.
Listing all of them, even though they are in the table of content. I think when you look at that list as one list, it's pretty impressive. And so I like just looking at that, even maybe seeing it on closer to the front, just the six, the priorities, and so it seems like, it gives you a nice picture, a nice feel for what the document's really going to be like because we're talking about all of those things, so. And I agree with you, Counselor Joyce. This is so well put together, it's easy to understand, it's an easy flow chart. I like the way each page and the arrows and, or the lines that go into that. I think it's very easy to understand, so I don't have any changes either.
One other thing I should have mentioned is that the other driving force in this will be the results of the citizen survey. And that's actually in the back of it, the back of this plan, the results. So that will also guide us as well as council directives.
I think what I also liked about it is that we're not necessarily starting from ground zero. I mean, there are some of these objectives that we've already put into motion, getting done. For example, safe community strategic priority number three, you know, develop a wide range of public outreach and education programs that help citizens feel comfortable contacting or interacting with police officers with the citizens academy. Is there a way that we can, I know it's a lot more words, document some things that we have put in place so that we can tangibly see that some of these, like I said, we aren't starting from ground zero. We have put some things into motion to do.
I think that's a really good idea because sometimes, I know, people have a hard time distinguishing between what is a strategy, what is a tactic, what is a goal, what's an objective. And I think when you see an example like you're stating, Elaine, if you could see something like that and say, oh yes, I do know that, I understand what you mean, I think that's a good idea.
Yeah, that, I mean, strategic plans, I think, have the tendency to stay pretty high level and it's hard to sometimes connect them to the life of the organization when you actually see, how does the decision, you know, we're making in this department today connect back to the strategic plan? It would be, I mean, not as part of this document necessarily, but I assume, and you sort of mentioned this in terms of all of the more detailed plans for each department. But I hope that we have, you know, as we go forward, each department would have, and they don't apply, all of them don't apply to each department individually, but where we can actually connect and say, and even as we move forward in decisions on council, when someone comes up, you know, when we've got a presentation from water or from police or something, that we need to do something to say, okay, this is where it connects, right? This goes back to 4.3.1 and it's advancing this strategy so that we, when we're making decisions day to day, six months from now, we're connecting it back and can pull back and say, this is why we're doing it this way because it aligns with this, this strategy of this objective and this. Because that's really where the meat of this will be, is how well it actually connects to decisions we make in July.
Right. And, yeah.
And the budget.
And further, yeah, yeah.
Well, it provides guidelines. I mean, you know, sometimes we can, we won't go off on tangents. It really provides a way for us to really focus on starting something and finishing it.
Right. And I'll kind of piggyback on some of those comments and say that, that these strategic priorities, number one through six, are not listed in any kind of order. You know, number one is not any more important than number six. I think, you know, moving forward with the budget planning as that's coming up and any kind of policy, you know, and this is for us on the council as well, to keep all six of these in mind and not just say, well, you know, we can do one through three with the money we have, but we're going to have to kind of shuck on number six. I think, you know, that is important for everybody to understand that these are all goals that we need to attain, not just, well, we've got enough to get one through four. They're not listed in any specific order, so.
Good point.
I would, I would continue that, what I talked about with Sherri also. I think civic engagement, the, people need numbers that they can relate to rather than, you know, develop, work collaboratively. And yes, it would be like a four-inch document if you put in every intervention under each strategy. Something that, someplace, somewhere, we, where, you know, develop and present fire, present fire prevention programs. What does that mean? You know, three times a year, we're going to go to the senior senator and give a program and four people attended this year, well, we're going to try to get 10 people next year. I'm totally making that up, but it's, no, I mean, this is lovely. I love words. I love reading these kinds of words. And when you put it down, it doesn't really tell you anything.
No, it does not. It was not meant to get into the, well, let me take that back. The original design was not meant to get into the, each department's tactics, but, and in fact, I believe that we have a lot of the managers sitting here in the office, yeah, audience tonight, and it's the first time they've seen this as well. So those are things that certainly they can add for us.
That's why they're not smiling, they're reading.
They're going, oh my gosh, this is a lot of work.
Well, it has been. And before I forget, I want to thank the CMO staff, Sherri's office and it's, we take what the council says seriously. I think there's one item that we have not delivered yet and we're, from past sessions, that we're still working on. So we try to respond and get those done.
And that's why we appreciate the work. Yes?
I'm, I'm looking at the timeline on page nine and it does mention that we would hold a planning session to review and update. Is, is that? Is, is that this now, or are we doing it early, or are we going to do something like that in March?
No. I mean, I, we need to rework this, again, this is still a draft. We hope to have a budget ready for you adopt by May. Because.
So, sometime after May, then?
Well, in May, where you can actually adopt it. You have to do it, I believe, May. Did I say May? April. We hope to have a budget for you to adopt in April, so that, no, this timeline is wrong, and there would be public hearings even before that.
But as far as the strategic plan.
Right.
To update the city and to update, probably right after we approve the budget, or during the budget, do you want to do it before, or right after it's approved?
Well, I really don't know, and you may discuss that.
I don't know that we can, yeah.
I mean, this could be it.
I think it's worth another conversation, when you look back at the strategic plan and, and see what the year is going to bring, and, you know, you'll, you'll know more about the budget.
Well, and you said this is the first time department heads are having a chance to look at this.
Right.
I mean, there might be some strategic initiatives that even we're not aware of that are happening, or being, they'll have a chance to give us feedback on, so that may change, you know, that may give us some more information in.
The good thing about this document, it's a living document, and it's about teamwork and everybody pitching in.
You will see this, at least in a formal setting, or a, at least, at the very least, a study session once a year, because it will be updated every year.
Well, I mean, to me, it seems that it doesn't, it doesn't matter when we finalize a budget to work our strategic plan. Kind of going back to your comments, Vice Mayor, you know, the, the budget should be developed to fit the strategic plan, not the other way around, you know? So, I mean, to me, it doesn't matter if we approve the budget or first or not. We need to get a, a working strategic plan, so that we can, you know, fit the budget around that, not the other way around, so. Maybe before.
And maybe I'm thinking of a different word than, I'm thinking of, like, vision, vision plan.
Oh, a visioning session?
Yeah. I mean, which would work into a strategic plan, but it's a little more of, you know, five years from now, I'd like for us to be able to have a air parachute school here, whatever.
That's a good idea.
I actually do really, really like that.
We can do that.
I mean, it, it makes sense to me that if, you know, this timeline's a little off for this year, because we're already in the middle of the budget process, and we're kind of getting to this, but I, I would like, want to look back at this plan and talk about, do we want to make big changes? Do we want to add big, big vision changes to it sometime in the fall, mid to late fall, so that then, that stuff's sort of in place as the next budget cycle is kicking in, and we're, if we're going to say we want to make, start making some changes, then it's ready before, you know, the, the serious budget start works, the budget works starts, although that really probably starts before the fall, so. You know, but the idea being that we're, we're looking at this and, and at least making, if there's going to be big changes, we're doing it before we get two months, you know, a month or two before the budget kicks in. So, I, I would like to see that sort of annual planning review session to be sometime late summer, you know, fall, time-ish, if that makes sense from a budget planning standpoint.
And if there's a desire for a visioning session, we, just let me know, and we'll schedule that.
Well, I, I agree with Will, you know, move it, move it back.
September-ish?
Yeah, although, you know, the end of the year gets so busy, and of course, summer is not great when people are traveling, but it's, to do it, get it on the calendar in September, right off the bat, so we can have it, have that.
That would be a really good time for it.
Anything else? Any other discussion?
I had dinky little word things, but they're just dinky little word things.
Well, send them to me.
Okay.
Just give me a page and line and.
And you said that this will be up for the public to see, that we're going to put a draft out?
Well, actually, unless the council objects, we'll take the word draft off, following, receiving some of the edits, excuse me?
If you're still editing, I would leave the word draft on there, so you get a final item to approve.
Okay. We'll just put it, put it on the consent document for a future meeting, and, but, we can get a draft out, yes, quickly.
Unless they're here, then they have their own copy right now.
That's right.
Okay. Anything else, counselors? Is there a motion to adjourn?
Still move.
Second.
You have a motion and a second to adjourn, please, then. And with a vote of five to zero, City Council for January 29th is, we are finished.